All right, we'll now call our city council, which will be our final budget and militrate hearing and regular meeting to order September the twenty sixth, six P M, six oh two P M. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation was given by Councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Dear Lord, I'd like to thank you for this wonderful evening. Thank you for protection and for good health. And Lord, help us to be able to make the wisest decisions that we need to make as we go forth, not only tonight, make decisions on behalf of the city, but then also of the next coming days with the storm that's coming, Lord. I ask you to protect all of our homes and our businesses and our family members in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the liberty of which stands one nation under God, in the good form from liberty to justice for all.
If you're seated, Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire here. Councilmember McCure here. Councilmember Taylor here. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Do we want to take care of the emergency resolutions first or do it at the end there, Mark?
I think we do it then.
Okay. All right, item number four, we have the Clifton Larson Allen Audit Presentation. We have Julie Fowler with us again. Julie, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. And I'm here tonight to present the results of the audit for the year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. And this is going to be a very summarized version of the financial statements, which you have a complete copy of, but feel free to ask me any questions as we go through this, and I'll do my best to answer those for you.
Very good.
So first up, we're going to look at some financial highlights. And I just have noted some of the more significant items that you might be interested in as you think about the financial statements. First of all, the in the general fund, your fund balance increased eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the year. And that was a combination of additional revenue that came in and not spending as much as you budgeted. So the year ended fund balance with six point five million dollars. And when we look at the general fund, of course, we like to think about how healthy is that? How long could the city continue if you brought in no additional revenue? Well, you're in a great place financially in your general fund that you actually had over one hundred percent of your general fund expenditures for that year sitting in fund balance. So that's a very healthy general fund. The infrastructure fund increased fund balance by one point three million dollars. So you had six point six million dollars left in that fund at the end of the year. Of course, all of that is restricted for the specific purposes that those funds can be used for. In your CRA fund, you increase fund balance by two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. And the ending fund balance there was one point two million, which is also restricted for the purposes allowed by the CRA statutes and of your plan. Next, moving on to the highlights of your enterprise funds. In your water and sewer fund, you had operating income of one point four million dollars. But you transferred out one point two million over to the general fund, which gave you an ending increase or like a profit you might think of of three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So that gives you twenty-seven million dollars of ending net position in that fund. Keep in mind, part of that, though, is invested in your assets of the system. So it's not like you have twenty-seven million dollars in cash available to spend in that fund, but you do have about ten million dollars of unrestricted net position available. So again, very healthy position for your water and sewer fund. The airport fund had an operating loss of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars to give you overall ending net position of nine million dollars. All of that is invested in the capital assets. You don't have any any available or spendable net position in that fund. And then finally, the solid waste fund had an operating loss of two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to give you ending net position of one point eight million dollars in that fund. About half of that is invested in the capital assets of the fund. The other half is your available net position. So any questions on the numbers before we move on to the audit reports?
No.
Right. So the services that we performed this year were an audit of the financial statements of the city. And then we, of course, issue separate financial statements for the CRA as is required by the Florida statutes. We also perform an examination of your compliance with certain statutes as are required by the rules of the auditor general. So looking at the results of those procedures, first of all, our independent auditors report expresses an unmodified opinion, which means we believe that the financial statements, the numbers are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's a clean opinion on the numbers. We did have a few findings in our report on internal control over compliance. One is related to the timeliness of getting the audit done. You did take some great steps in the current year, but didn't quite make that year end, the June thirtieth filing deadline again. The largest piece of that was one of the pension audits wasn't completed on time. So we're very hopeful that moving forward next year, we'll get all of those pieces in place to be able to finish the audit and have your report submitted to the the state on time.
Which excuse me, which pension was that?
It was the firefighters.
Oh, thank you.
We also noticed some timeliness or issues with timeliness in some of the reconciliations that had been performed during the year. And you had a lot of turnover during the year in the finance and your consultants and things like that. Again, those issues are being taken care of as you go into the coming year. The final item in our management letter is, it seems like kind of a nitpicky item, but your your policy is that you can't over expend your budget at the department level and the community center department actually spent four hundred and fifty-eight dollars more than the final budget. So very small dollars, but when we look at compliance, either it's kind of a pass fail thing.
Okay.
So the recommendation is there, you know, just to make sure all of those little adjustments get taken care of at the end of the year. And finally, for the examination procedures, you are in compliance with the requirements for investment of public funds for the CRA. There is one item that needs to be addressed related to making sure your fund balance is properly identified for a specific project going forward. So we've been talking a lot with Melody about that, and that's going to be taken care of going forward also. Finally, we've issued some separate letters to you as the group charged with governance that are required by the auditing standards, just to tell you how things went during the course of the audit. So we'd ask you to read that as you have time.
Yeah.
And we want to thank you for allowing us to serve as the auditors for the city and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anything for Julie?
They'll just come better with a little bit better news next time. Make sure we're perfect. We're close. We're getting there.
That's always the goal.
We're doing a very good job.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Seeing none, Julie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything staff would like to add? Okay. All right, item number five, we have the discussion with council about holding a professional wrestling event, Boys and Girls Club. Mister Dave Cornet is here to tell us all about it, possibly show us some moves. Little demonstration.
Sure, sure, sure. I'm going to say very little. Dave Cornet, Boys and Girls Club, two oh seven State Street. Mark Anderson is here from Arcadia to speak on behalf of having a wrestling match at the club. He came here and they found us and I know this much and I'm not going to get in the ring, so.
Got it.
I will make him get in the ring if it will give me a yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Hey, uh, my name's Mark Anderson. I run CWA, which is Plastic Wrestling Association. Uh, we're a new wrestling association. And I'm based on Arcadia, but my partners are all over in the professional wrestling world here in the state. We all got together about six, seven months ago and decided that back in the eighties and nineties and all that, I know you guys, if you're my age in your forties, uh, you remember when like Gordon Solly was around and you'd have these yeah, y'all know who I'm talking about. They would come to places like Avon Park and Arcadia and Wachula, and they put on these shows because it was it was and it was family friendly and everybody in town would go. And we've noticed that over time that entertainment in general, whether it be concerts or whatever, skips over places like us. They go to Fort Myers or Tampa and you have to drive two hours and then spend a WWE ticket. This is just a house match, four hundred dollars for a ringside seat.
Wow.
Exactly, yeah. December, they're doing a live TV taping of SmackDown over in Tampa, five hundred dollars for a ringside seat, and that's one seat. That's not so we all decided that that's crazy, you know, you know, I know it's independent wrestling and most people have never seen these guys or anything, but we're like, we can do better. We can come in these back to these small and mid-sized towns and bring some affordable, family-friendly entertainment, just so people have something to do. We've had a couple of shows already. Well, we've had one show over in DeSoto County. Run the permits through the city, had no problems. Actually, some of the guys came, they loved it. Uh, we have got two shows lined up over in Arcadia now. One is, uh, at the fair, well, two, both are at fairgrounds, but one is in November. And then one is actually at the fair, the Fair Association. Some of their board members were our first show and they really liked what they saw and they hired us to to come in and do a show there. And some folks from the Hardy County Fair Association were there and we're in talks with them as well as the South Florida Fair down in West Palm Beach. Um, so that stuff is in the works for us. The reason we picked the Boys and Girls Club, number one, is a great venue. Two, we can reach a lot of kids that way because what we want to do is make it family-friendly. We don't do the the blood and the guts and all that. It's it's old school professional wrestling. We guys jumping off rope, doing flips and all that stuff. Kids love it. And we can keep it fairly cheap at a place like that. Obviously, we would love to make a donation back to the Boys and Girls Club for allowing us to do that because we know they got to keep the lights on. And they're keeping the lights on if we allow if they're allowed to do this. So they're going to have electric cost. So obviously, we would love to kick back or pay whatever rent it may be. And then we would offer the kids that go there, you know, mom and dad buy a ticket, kid gets in free. Just we want to keep it family-friendly. We try to keep the tickets as low as possible by getting the community involved, by getting sponsors and things like that. So that's that's what we want to do and that's our our mission statement. Uh, we've also met with the YMCA down in Seabron, and I met with their board of directors and we're planning a show there. We haven't decided got a date yet, but we're going to do a show there as well. So uh, there's some couple of things they had to check with their with their lease or something like that. Uh, but once they get cleared, we're going to set a date for there too. So um, but that's what we want to do. We want to come back to the smaller towns and just have good entertainment. Even if you don't like wrestling, it's something to do besides sit at home and stare at TV.
Sure.
So.
Sounds good. Um, you know, I think it's excellent idea. Uh, just simply ask Jerry, do you see anything wrong with it?
I I don't see anything wrong with it, but we're going to have to overcome some hurdles, I guess, in that regard, insurance and indemnification.
We 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 carry a liability policy for every event we do. And we we do it per event because every place is different.
Well, we basically gift the Boys Club, uh, the use of that place. So we'd have to know if there's any type of, uh, income, you know, if that's going to be exchanged, we'll have and, uh, if the city wants to do a permitting program for this, then, you know, I don't know anything about it, but I can certainly find out. But somebody will have to oversee it that knows what's what they're doing.
Yeah. And, uh, and like I said, we we our show is over in in Arcadia that we've done so far. And in the future, we 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 run permits for and whatever requirements you have on insurance, we get we get those. We run per per event because like I said, there's so many different places that have different variables they want in their insurances and stuff.
Well, you know, obviously, it's a it's a high risk circumstance. And I say that relatively speaking, it's not high risk compared to, you know, cliff jumping.
Yeah.
But, uh, it, you know, it's it's a higher risk than the Boys and Girls Club normally has.
Yeah.
So I mean, we're going to have to look at what those insurance amounts are going to be and things like that. And that's you know, like I said, I don't think there's anything insur- insurmountable about it. And there's no prohibition that I'm aware of, uh, for the city to do that. You know, in other words, allow it to be done because obviously we're not going to participate in it, but, um, we'll have to look.
Not in an official capacity.
We'll have to do an agreement.
Right.
I have a question.
Whatever we need to do, we'll get it done.
So you don't have a date yet?
We're waiting for your approval.
Okay, but so you get our approval.
We get your approval. We're looking either January or March of next year. That'll give us time to come in and get all if y'all require us to get a permit, get a permanent process done, the permitting process done. Get the insurances squared away and all that and give us time to get sponsors. Because that's we get sponsors to help keep the cost down.
Sure.
Because obviously, these guys are professionals and they get paid.
Is this an outside event or in the auditorium?
It'll be inside.
Okay.
I I I've never attended one of the events at the Tampa Armory, but, um, uh, I did live near, uh, the American Dream, Dusty Rhodes, and, uh, I do know that it's kind of a raucous group, so I'm thinking that you're going to need some, you're going to need, you're going to need a
Not as bad as you would think.
Well, I think you're going to need, um, and I I defer to our ex-police officer here, the city manager, but I think you're going to need, you know, at least one police officer there for crowd control.
We usually bring, we want two usually.
Okay.
And they're we usually don't have problems because we don't, we try to, we don't do alcohol at any of our events, but just in case, you know, you know, you never know because you've got a crowd of people. So we usually ask for two. And we obviously we pay for them, but we just, we 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 require on our on ourselves too.
Okay. I don't know what, um, if you guys are going to enter into separate agreement with them or how you're going to handle that because, um, you know, is we're going to do it as a sublease, you know, this or you know, but either way, we're going to have to have a separate agreement with regards to the the protection of the city.
Correct.
But.
All all we want by venue of the city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're pretty self-efficient. Whatever we are, we don't, the only place we need to build.
Yeah.
We bring our own stuff.
Just ask, be let Mark and I work out the details. We'll we'll figure it out.
Sure. The thing added in that because they are using the city facility and Boys and Girls Club talk about a donation, that probably should be in the agreement too that they are getting it.
Well, and I, uh, I think the extra people there, I mean, you probably the city's going to want some something for that as well, but we'll figure all that out. We 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 want to encourage, you know, more more things to do in the city. It's just, it's just, it's got it's got to have some protective aspect to the city.
We average between a hundred and fifty to two hundred people per event. That's that's about, that's about normal. If you get, if we get more than that, we're ecstatic. So we we've been in places where we get twenty-five people show up, so.
Yeah, if you're doing it through the city and, uh, Arcadia permitting program, they probably have all your your revenues up your gate for that.
Uh, they they didn't ask for that, but I can I can I can show it to you.
Okay, well, I'm not not immediately, but I think this can be something we're going to want to look at. So we understand, you know, we're not trying to take a a pound of flesh, but maybe a couple ounces.
And by all means, you know.
They're not on the map.
Yeah.
And we are, we are going to ask Sheriff, Doc, to
Yeah.
Do do you bring your own vendors? Right here.
At the end.
Do you bring your own vendors?
Uh, no, we don't. Usually what we do is we get ahold of like the high school or one of the local clubs and ask them to take care of concessions, whatever they make, they make.
We ain't laying on the ground ourselves.
Okay, and where are your tickets sold?
We do it online or at the door.
Okay, and, um, you talked about if the parents pay, you know, you let the kids.
Like if a parent buys a ticket, their their child's free. Uh huh. That way, that way, you know, that way, we're still making some to pay our guys, but you know, the family can still come.
Okay, so you said you're trying to keep the prices down. So what is the average if if for pay tickets for parents?
We do like a ten dollar general admission, twenty dollar ringside.
I I think I already know the answer to this, but just so I have it, uh, you're not a nonprofit corporation, right?
No, sir, not right now, but we're working on it because we're trying to build a because independent professional wrestlers, they they pretty much, they won't be, they can't get insured. So we get guys all the time that get hurt that need help with medical bills and things like that. So we're trying to do that. And also too, like if we come into a community, like let's say we go to Boys and Girls Club, we show up and we see something like messed up. Say they need a new toilet or something like that, we can like take some money out there and help them out a little bit with that too.
Well, if if you be nonprofit, it helps. And if you if you can be a five oh one, if you can buy it, be a five oh one C three, beautiful.
Yeah.
But, uh,
Not right now. It won't be right now, but hopefully in the future we will be. We're like I said, we're working on it. We're just, we're just getting up and running right now.
Yeah. And if your hope is to use, uh, you know, other cities' facilities in the future, like he said, being a five oh one C three is going to help you tremendously. Because that's that's kind of the golden ticket when it comes to municipalities is we can, you know, do a lot more for a five oh one C three than we can for private companies. So just just to help.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Is there anything else, uh, we need from them right now?
All right, yeah.
You'll pay with it forward.
Yeah. Yep.
They need to advertise to get the people. For us, it's not a big deal. We can work out a date for us.
Sure. I don't think anyone's opposed, anyone?
It could be exciting.
I welcome.
You have no opposition here. Uh, in fact, we're all for it. So by all means, uh, get with the staff and see if we can work out all the details and bring back a date to us. And I'm sure you'll need a formal approval on that specific date and and all that kind of stuff. Perfect. Yeah, but Dave, you do have other groups that that use the Boys and Girls Club, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is not anything out of the ordinary. Right. Right. Sure.
Yeah.
That's what I figured.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm very interested in that.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a great event and I hope to attend as well. So.
You bring your own referee or is that Dave's job? No. We'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number six, we have the MLK event request with road closure and donation from the city. Do we have a Ms. Robertson here? Nope.
Nope.
But we have a fellow here that's going to talk to us anyway.
Yes.
All right, if you can give your name and address for the, uh, for the record.
My name is Raymond Jones, uh, local address two oh six, uh, Joe Hilton Street, Avon Park, three three eight two five.
Okay.
Uh, our president, Takiya, pray she couldn't be here tonight, but I'm the vice president and the co-chair. And what we're doing is, uh, I believe I have all the necessary paperwork and contracts already into the city. What we're doing is requesting, um, twenty-eight hundred dollars that we requested last year. I think we approved, but we had to cancel due to pandemic. We're trying to do the Martin Luther King March again. I think this annual event hasn't been held in about three years. We're trying to just get it back going again, so.
Jerry, if you would, um, being that this is the city and not the CRA, if you would please go over what the rules are when in with donating to, uh, these types of organizations for these types of events.
Yeah, um, they have the five oh one C three.
Yes.
Okay, and, um, we need to have some kind of an agreement as to how the money is going to be spent and so we can enforce the fact that it's being spent that way. And, um, then, of course, we have to have some follow-up on that, so.
Yes, sir. Uh, I believe I turned in, I don't know the young lady's name, yeah, visit our office twenty times.
Chrissy.
Yeah, but I I believe I have the necessary paperwork in it. If anything else that I need, you guys let let us know.
If you have your five oh one C three certificate from the IRS and
I don't think I turned, I think I turned the insurance in, but I can't bring that up to the city hall.
All your contact information and so on, because we did just a just a brief agreement, but I need to know the purpose of the money and what it's going to be used for. So when they, when the, uh, council reviews the agreement, they can say, okay, we agree to that, and that's the that's good purpose for that. But then you can't spend it on something else.
Correct.
We we actually have been burned on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, uh?
If I can, uh, make a statement, I just looked on SunBiz and they are, they do have active nonprofit status with SunBiz.
Perfect.
But the, uh, the the C, the, um, five oh one C three certificate has to come from the IRS because of the, um, SunBiz would only list it's nonprofit to my recollection. Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, so as Mr. Jones says, uh, there is a pretty good synopsis of what exactly the event will be. All the things that the money will be spent on is pretty clear in here. So does anyone have any questions for Mr. Jones?
Well, my only question is, do we usually, I know they haven't had this in three years, but is this, do we have any kind of guidelines as far as amounts that we approve for these types of events? Do we have any? I mean, I know the other ones we've done has been have been CRA with like advertising costs and things like that as far as just something of this nature. Are there any guidelines as far as what we're supposed to follow?
So whatever you all budgeted. And and so every year you guys talk about budgeting for the city, not just the CRA, but the city. You know, how much you want to spend for these types of events.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, how you stay within that budget, of course, is your purview, not mine, but that's generally how you said it. And then, um, whatever you think the value is to the citizens of the city is really the the how much you think that you should get forward, bearing in mind that you may have, you know, many others in this budget year, which you just started, you know, actually you start Monday. Um, during the the budget year that this is going to be in, it's, you know, you're going to may have ten or twenty people come in and ask for the same type of thing and it equally, you know, um, deserving of, uh, this for what they're doing to the community. Just that's just a a general concept.
Yeah.
So Melody, do you know right offhand how much we have but budgeted?
Yeah, we have twelve thousand budgeted, five of it is earmarked for the fireworks. So.
And since I've been here, this organization's also been budgeted about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. And and I actually went to the event, I don't know whether it was three or three years ago, four years ago. And I will say the the place was just packed full of people and a lot of happy faces and people were just, the food was great and I think this is absolutely great. So I'm all for it.
Yep. And also the last year you didn't have the year before, knowing they did turn in their invoice, it showed what they paid, what they paid for, what they asked for, and it was the same thing they ask in here at Jump House and that. They had all that on their invoice.
Yeah, that's important.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve item number B six for the MLK event.
In the amount, twenty-eight hundred?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. My last call for questions. Saying none.
Just have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, this is just out of curiosity. Um, you have bounce houses and everything there?
Yes, ma'am.
Where do you set those up at?
Like out in field, we'll put them up. The last time we did it, I can't remember exactly where we put them, but they'd be out in the grassy area.
Oh, okay. Okay. I was just curious because I where the field was.
Big though. They're not super big.
Oh, okay.
You know, under ten to get in.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm saying.
Big kids, no matter.
Right.
Okay. When you say the field, you're saying the football field?
No, 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 we're going to be MLK conflict up near the Boys and Girls area.
Uh huh.
Yeah, so it's like grassy areas around.
Oh.
Right. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passive.
Mr. Jones, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, item number seven, we have an event at Donaldson Park. This will be trunk or treat Halloween festival to be put on by the Heartland Helping Hands, Inc., Ms. Sherry Eason.
Good evening.
Hello. Yes, ma'am.
I'm I'm Sherry Eason. I'm actually the secretary now. I handed over my position, but this is my husband.
Okay.
President of Heartland Helping Hands, Shane Eason.
And you guys reside where or where is Heartland Helping Hands out of?
Uh, we live at four oh one Lime Creek Drive, uh, Seabron, Florida.
Very good. What can we do for you?
We're actually here, uh, looking for, uh, final approval to hold our, uh, Halloween spectacular at Donaldson Park.
Okay.
Um, I believe we've, uh, submitted all the proper paperwork. Uh, we do, uh, have our five oh one C three as well. The only things we're really looking at is, uh, um, the question we had for the city is, uh, will we fall into the city's insurance? Do we have to have our own event insurance because it is out of city facility? Or how is that handled? We're we're prepared to get our own insurance. If not, we're just, that's a question we had.
Well, pretty universally, we require that you get your own event insurance. There are some circumstances where, you know, you requested to the council, um, and their infinite, um, uh, grace, they might give you, you know, um, that, you know, um, pay allow you to pay to not get that, but it's, I I haven't seen it since I've been here, but that is conceivable.
That's what we were wondering. Doesn't hurt to ask. Worst worst answer you can get is no.
Well, it's just, you understand, there's like, like I was saying, there could be twenty, thirty, forty, fifty organizations that do that. And so we all you know, in order to do that, we're running the risk instead of you.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, generally always required that you have specific event insurance.
Uh, another thing we're asking is that the restroom facilities remain unlocked, uh, for that event.
Okay.
Um, we're actually holding it on October thirtieth, uh, from five to eight P M.
Okay, but this is not the same event that we
No.
Okay. This is okay. Separate event. Okay. There is another Halloween event, um, that's taking place. I guess it's put on by the chamber. Is that right?
Oh, it's just, uh,
It's just a community event.
Community event.
Uh, the day before on Saturday night. Thought it was connected, but never mind.
Also, also, there's there's one thing that we are looking to have and, uh, we're not sure how, uh, to go about it. We are actually looking to have a fire dancer, uh, kind of close out the evening. And we weren't sure whether we needed to have the fire department present or would that something, would that, would that be something that is covered under our event insurance?
Let's just say the insurance.
Is it allowed?
The the insurance would have to be substantially more if the count, if the council allowed it. It sounds like a very dangerous, like fire breathers are always catching fire. And, uh, so I can't imagine a fire dancer gets away with it that often either, so.
So wait a minute, though, if it was on the beach, on the sand, there would be no risk. I mean, the risk would be lower.
Yeah, I think the risk just falls into their insurance. So basically, if your insurance is willing to cover it, then go for it.
If the person you're hiring has their own insurance as well, if you
Right. Yeah, whoever does this, chances are they do this all the time, so they're probably going to know exactly what they have to have. So they could probably answer that better.
I I would feel better if that person is doing it's also signs that he I, I would feel better if that person is doing it, it's also signs that he released the city.
Yep.
Is that something that we would get um from City Hall? Do I need to come down and?
Yeah.
Where would I get that from, the release?
City, City Hall, yeah, once, once I put it together. Yeah, uh, cuz I don't live over at City Hall, so.
That was almost as entertaining as us trying to decide which one of us was gonna ask you that question.
Oh, yeah.
Are you gonna advertise for people to bring their vehicles and do this?
Yes, um, we actually have vintage cars that are gonna be showing up and to kind of fill in the blanks because we cannot get a definite how many we will have. We have the moose riders, they're gonna decorate their motorcycles, and they're gonna hand out candy, that sort of thing.
Okay.
We're gonna have bounce houses and you turned my page on me.
Yes, I did.
Okay, we've got the vintage cars, um, the moose riders with the decorated motorcycles, trunk or treat, obviously out of the vintage cars and the motorcycles. Um, bounce houses, the cheerleaders are um asking to do a performance and cheers to get the kids motivated, um, the local middle school and high school cheerleaders. And um, we have been discussing with the fire department to see if we could get a fire truck or two out for the kids' entertainment, so that might come in handy or.
If there's an accident with the fire dancer, I promise you, there will be fireworks.
I couldn't, I couldn't imagine not.
And see, um, a DJ that's going to be there to play scary music and probably get people motivated throughout.
Well, I, I.
This was what we could throw together at such short notice when Heartland Culture Alliance kind of asked us if we could take the reins on this one.
I, I would uh think that you would need to get with the chief as well with regard to how far people have to be away from the fire dancer, you know, and uh what type of combustibles they use and things like that. I'm just throwing that out there, I have no idea what fire dancers do, but other than dancing fire.
Chief, how do you feel about fire dancers?
Specific, like they have one in mind already, I don't know if you do.
Do, our board is actually logged in watching right now, hopefully a great guest on this one.
All right, well, I'll be honest with you, I gotta do some research, I've never dealt with a fire dancer before.
Well, if it's a professional, I'm sure that it's not gonna just come up here and gobble down some fire, I'm sure they're gonna have their own, you know.
She's a professional.
Knowledge about it.
All she does.
It's a family friendly performance, right?
Absolutely, yes, only to entertain the children, proper attire so that not to offend any children or.
Sure. Well, very good. Professionals actually jump canyons and motorcycles and stuff like that too, and I'm not so sure we put that, but never, but nevertheless, I, I, you know, if you can make the chief happy, I'm sure you can make the council happy.
Yep.
And if you can't make the chief happy, I leave that to the council, that's not my purview.
Sure, so it sounds to me like uh we need a little bit more information, um, need to get that release form from City Hall, and we need to get possibly have your dancer uh organization meet with uh the chief, or at least by telephone.
And city manager.
And city manager, and.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yep.
Um, you gave the address of a Seabron address for the business, you live here in Avon Park?
Actually, um, we don't live in Avon Park right now, not by choice, it was because we couldn't find a place when we moved back over.
Where do you live?
Um, Seabron.
Seabron, and are you doing this? Are you doing this in Seabron as well?
No, we're doing it here and Lake Placid, Heartland Helping Hands does activities all over Highlands County. Um, but this is where our roots are, we were born and raised here, so this is kind of.
All you need to say, you're born and raised here, I love it. Love it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Uh.
All right, so you have, you have a, a, a maybe yes?
A maybe yes on the fire dancers, but can we get a final approval on having the event itself?
Yeah, so the, the event's fine, uh, so long as you can get us the insurance and the, the agreement and everything that was uh required by the city attorney there. Um, but no one's opposed to this, right?
Yeah, the identification, I guess you have a standard of package that I sent you, I guess, on that identification, insurance is that what you're using? If not, then we'll have to have an agreement.
Right, and even in the event that you can't work out all the details with the fire dancer, that, that's only one aspect of this event, so.
That's, everything else is, is, you know, gonna be easy peasy, hopefully.
Right, so uh pending all the documents that uh I stated there and that the city attorney has requested, um, do we have a motion to approve?
I'm gonna make the motion to approve it, number B seven.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay.
All right, up next, we have the consent agenda, this will be for the minutes from September the twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve item number C eight, the man is September twelfth, please.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any questions or changes? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number nine, we have the fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-seven, five-year capital improvement plan. Melody?
Yes, so every year we are required to pass the five-year capital improvement plan, and we have discussed most of this during the budget process, but there were a few items that were added to the year, not the current year, but um years four through, or two through four. Um, so the first one would be in the transportation department, um, we added a mower replacement program. Um, we added a Ford F one fifty for forty-five thousand, two Ford F one fifties um for a total of eighty thousand. A Ford high roof cargo van for forty-one thousand, and in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we added a diesel F two fifty with a flatbed for sixty-two thousand. We ordered a Ford two fifty diesel four-wheel drive for seventy thousand, and we added an F one fifty two-wheel drive for forty-five thousand.
Okay, any questions?
These are already in the, this year's budget, correct?
They're, they're actually four years, um, two through five.
Right.
Got you, I got it.
C I P.
Correct.
All right, any other questions?
Nope.
Seeing none, please move on.
Uh, Parks and Rec Department, we added the Donaldson Park Fird app um for years twenty-three through twenty-seven. And in year twenty-four, twenty-five, we added an F one fifty extended cab for seventy thousand.
Can I, can I jump in there?
Sure.
Uh, under that Donaldson Park, I put a narrative in there, if you haven't looked at it, there's something else you wanna put in there, now's the time to do it, because when it comes to the Fird app, they go by what's in there.
Okay.
So if you had a chance to look at it.
Sure.
Think there's something else that needs to be in there.
Uh, so there was a um initiative that was put forward several years ago. Actually, originally started by Ms. Anne Marie Feeny, a lot of you remember her, she was first into a lot of events in Avon Park, and that was for a concert venue. So this would be a stage, uh, this would be some beautifications, uh, be also possibly some changing rooms for plays and things like that, um, it's something that I would definitely like to explore further, so if we add it into our C I P, doesn't mean that we're necessarily married to it, but it would at least give us the opportunity to possibly seek funding for it, so. Um, as far as for a budget for that, I would say, um, said that a um, you know, a two hundred thousand dollar budget. Because there's a great deal of beautifications that could be added to uh Donaldson Park as well, so. Is that, you need more specific details at this current time?
Well, just, I don't know if you all had a chance to read it, it's, I'll read it off if you haven't, and actually, some of the narrative, that hasn't changed, some on the vehicles, we found some errors in that we fixed this morning, which will be in, in when you get your whole budget packet, will be the correct verbiage, but Donaldson Park, park sits on the east side of Lake Verona with a large sandy beach with the city and county residents and other visitors truly enjoy, plans for Donaldson Park include a splash pad, currency spray ground with age-appropriate area and fencing, an amphitheater, new irrigation system throughout the park, new and additional child playground equipment, the project would be funded by the uh Florida recreational, the Recreation Department assistance, the Fird app for four hundred thousand. If there's something else you'd like added in there, now's the time, we can get it in there, cuz like I said, they go off this, as we found out this year, working with um Corbett.
What about the tennis courts? Rees, ree, either resurfacing some of them with the netting, I don't know if that would be considered part of the playground equipment?
No, but actually, when you bring that up, we could put in there pickleball, because that's the biggest thing now, and the county just sent me, um, actually Casey sent it um, for any area in the county that's, that's looking to put pickleball in because it's taken over tennis, and Jerry's got a big grin on his face, and.
I said so.
And I, I actually had someone come up, Casey had, eh, probably almost two years ago, to look at our, our courts, turn them into pickleball, and he said that the way they are, they'd have basically rip, be ripped out and redone, but that's something we can add in there if you'd like it, it's probably a good idea, cuz we do get questions on that. And it seems like to be the, the biggest thing going on.
Sure.
Our tennis courts are not being used regularly?
Well, some people tell me they are, and others tell me they're not.
Yeah, some people do, some people don't, but uh, from what I understand, that lines can be painted in such a way that they could be used for both, right?
Yeah, cuz a little bit different, right?
Yeah, eh, yeah, there actually, there's a, the pickleball court's smaller, but it's about um, um, four fifths the size of a tennis court, and it's um but it has different color in the front, um, where the net is, because it's the kid, they call it the kitchen, where you can't go, no, no volley zone, where in tennis, you can actually go up to the net and hit ball. But um, I've seen people that renovate, like um, um, Manatee County renovated a bunch at the high school there, the Lakewood Ranch for High School that where they have um, just put striping down um for the pickleball, and they have portable pickleball nets. Now, I, you know, I think eventually you're gonna end up with pickleball courts. Yeah, because, I mean, that really is taking over tennis, I would, very quickly. But that's, and it is an option, if you can, you can do the uh temp, the um portable nets, but they'll probably, you know, and they might get stolen, you know, if they're left out, and uh, so that's not a real issue.
So is a pickleball net lower than tennis court?
It is lower.
I see.
I actually used to drive by there almost on a daily basis after work and, and early evening, and usually the only time I saw people out there was uh, years ago, they used to use it on the evening, they used to have classes there, but they kind, that kind of went away. And the only thing I see once in a while on a Saturday morning, somebody will go out there, and they're basically just hitting the ball back and forth, they're not necessarily playing in a tennis game, so to speak, I mean, they're, cuz they're just trying to have fun, so we do have two courts, we could change one.
Part of the issue, uh, why you don't have more events there, just because there's only two, and you typically need, you know, four, six, or eight to have actual tournaments, so.
Well, we used to have four, we turned them into a parking lot because they weren't getting used.
Yeah, the high school used to use the courts.
Right.
For the girls.
Used to.
To us, same.
Whenever I was in high school, we used to play all of our matches there, so.
In my neighborhood, we have in my neighborhood, we have twelve pickleball courts, and they're, and they're adding another eight right now, they're actually constructing another eight for the season.
An interesting thing would be if you could get the schools to actually start having leagues.
They, they, actually, the school kids do a lot of pickleball now, you know, it's not, I mean, everybody sees it as an old person's sport, but it's not anymore.
Sure. Being that our high school thing has, what, six or eight courts in?
I think so.
Yeah, and the college has a, quite a few courts as well.
Well, if you want, when you go through the rest of this and you approve this, you can just add in, we can add pickleball courts, so it doesn't mean that has to be done, but it's in there, if that's one of the things you pick and choose.
I mean, even something generic like sports equipment, you know, or sport surfaces or something like that, that way we have plenty of leeway.
Okay.
Mark, I have a question on um number four, the Lake Tulane Playground, it's a uh beach improvement and parking. Beach improvement, what, what are they improving in reference to the beach, and where is the parking?
That, that was actually in there before I got here, um, I didn't write the.
If I recall, the beach improvement, uh, there was an issue, I don't even know if it's still an issue, but uh, there was a either a storm drain uh or a lift station that was over there close to the beach, you might know more about it, Rick, but there was, there was an issue where it was washing out. And I know part of that, there was new swales that were built, there was new berms that were built, this is probably going back four years, something like that, so I don't know if that's what they're referring to, and it's just been carried over, over and over, but.
Actually, we, we made the beach bigger, was it last year when they went down there?
Yep, that could have been part of it as well.
Yeah, we, we had made it bigger, but they did on the other side of Tulane, um, where a lift station is, they did put all catchment area in there.
Okay.
I think it was about four, five years ago that one time.
Okay, can you think of off the top of your head, any other beach improvements that this may be referencing at Lake Tulane?
No, sir, I can't.
Is there any need for retaining walls or anything like that there?
Not that beach.
Okay.
Oh, and what about the parking rate, what is that about? Cuz right now, there is no parking, so.
This is the, this is the first I've ever heard of parking there, I haven't heard of it in the past.
You, you're right, there, there is basically no parking there now.
There is.
Pretty much parked where they wanna do, and it's on, it's on the road or it's on the grass, so that's part of it. And maybe next year, we can get a Fird app grant for that, so.
That would be nice.
Where would you park?
We'd have to make a parking lot.
I think they would rather have the beach expanded.
We'll expand the beach.
Yep, well, the, the, the point is here on this, on C I P is to be kind of as big as possible, that way it gives you the greatest leeway. And you wanna maximize the funds, you know, because if we don't ask for the funds, then we're definitely not gonna get the funds, so we need to have something in there.
All right.
Anything else?
No, go ahead, no.
Okay, on the water and wastewater C I P, um, item number thirteen was earmarked just for the Bell Street um water treatment plant, we changed that to water treatment plants. Um, should be plural, repairs and maintenance. Um, we added generators for the lift stations. Hundred and thirty thousand each year, we added an F three fifty four-wheel drive. Actually, two of those, and we added an F five fifty four-wheel drive. Um, we added lift station lining out in years twenty-four through twenty-seven. We added an F two fifty four-wheel drive diesel, two of them, for twenty-four, twenty-five, in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand. And we added in year twenty-six, twenty-seven, a Chevy Silverado sixty-five hundred crane truck for a hundred and seventy thousand. And these are all just estimates, once we get closer to the actual year, we'll have to pull um quotes.
You know, at, at one time, we talked about uh possibly getting a generator for the community center. Uh, we brought up several times, mainly for the use of the situation we're about ready to go through possibly this week. So that we could have electricity at the community center, which would also be a focal place for the community people to come and uh have air conditioner cool down for a while, be able to charge your cell phones, as well as a, a shelterable place to bring emergency food and drink funds at location, so I know I talked to Rip one time about what it would cost to, where we could plug a generator into that panel just to do part of the community center, so is there any way we could add that to I guess not this year, but maybe the next year or the year after.
Safety plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see why we can't.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a generator for the boys and girls club? I was talking about more like a.
Yeah, that's it. Well, that's, that's actually a shelter, so yes.
Awesome.
That would, that would be in general fund, though.
Yes.
But the generator for the community center come out of general fund.
Yeah.
Unless we can find a grant.
Well. If enough uh damage happens from this hurricane, there could be grant money out there. Sad to say. Anything else?
Yeah, in the sanitation fund, we added in years twenty-four through twenty-seven, five, four hundred thousand for a truck replacement program. And in year twenty-five, twenty-six, we added a cat nine fifty front-end loader with a root rake to, for the uh
land. Maintain the landfill.
Yep. Thank you, Rick.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, do we have any questions on the C I P? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to approve. Item number nine.
Okay, make a motion to approve item number D nine for the uh five-year capital improvement plan, please.
With the noted additions?
That with the noted additions, Jim?
Yes, with additions.
With the noted additions, so is, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, item number ten, this will be a public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, establishing the final mileage rate.
That is a resolution to save Avon Park of Highlands County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes.
Adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for the city of Avon Park, Highlands County for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, providing for an effective date.
All right. As I said, this will be a public hearing. Melody, if you'll start off with a overview, then we'll open up the public hearing for questions.
This is the uh, final process in the truth and millage um, process for the, the state of Florida requires us to do. Um, our final millage rate was voted on um, at the previous meeting and it is at four point three six eight one mils per one thousand dollars of value.
Okay. We will now open the public hearing for resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-six. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to have any questions or speak can do so. Don't see anyone jumping up and down. We have one taker. Please give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bruce Everly. Uh, my wife and I live at three oh seven West Peabody Circle.
Yes, sir.
Park. Uh, I just need to know the justification in uh, this increase after hearing the finances of the city and things are going great guns, why do we need to increase taxes? You know, there's a lot of us in this city that uh, are, are on limited incomes and uh, you're gradually making it impossible between our utility bills, taxes and whatnot that we have to leave. So that's why I'm asking for justification and since we're doing so well in the city, how about half of that for this year? Instead of the whole, whole amount.
Okay. Do you want to discuss any of the additions?
So we had um, we had to add employees, um, because there was not enough employees for the services that we have in Avon Park. Um, and we had unfortunately in years past, council um, reduced the rate so low that our fleet, our vehicles and equipment are obsolete and needing to be replaced.
Yep. The maintenance in the uh, water sewer uh, department was probably one of the largest ones. Um, it had fell into disrepair.
Correct, like you know, we, D E P wouldn't renew our, our permit for our headworks because of our headworks, we had to replace that this year as well.
And he's discussing the subsidy system uh, for the entire city. So basically, the subsidy system that runs all of our waste um, was not being adequately maintained. And so what we've had to do is kind of go overboard to bring that up to standard. Uh, the D E P was getting to the point where they weren't wanting to renew our permits because our system had fallen into disrepair. Um, so we're taking the steps adequate to fix that situation so that we don't have a much larger problem. As a new plant costs somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty million dollars.
Correct.
Um, if we can do this maintenance, then it'll prevent us from having to completely replace the system.
What's more, the um, D E P will actually fine you for um, violations and so you're, you end up paying it one way or the other.
So, and we, we, we've also lost the usage of the inmates as well, where we were, we had five inmates every day, five days, we helped maintain. We don't have that no more. That's not an option.
If, if, if we want to speak, just so it's on the record, we have to get you at the microphone there. No problem.
I understand why, I, I don't understand why you can't use some of the surplus then to fund some of these things that have to occur.
Yeah, so currently we are budgeted as using quite a bit of our surplus. Um, this was actually the lowest that we could raise it and not deplete many of our surpluses. So what you saw on the audit report was for last year. So basically, we didn't end up spending as much money as what we had budgeted and that's why uh, Julie Fowler, the uh, the auditor uh, stated that we added more uh, to our reserves than what we had originally planned on. The same thing might end up being true this time. We don't think it will be, but it could be.
Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
Also, we didn't have to take about two and a half million dollars of reserves because we got the American Rescue Plan.
Right. Yep. Part of the COVID relief packages that were handed down for the feds. So. Any other questions or anything specific? Okay. Seeing none, uh, this is still a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to ask any questions on this resolution can now do so. Going once, going twice, seeing no other speakers, uh, public hearing for resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-six is now closed. Any further questions from city council?
I, I have a question for the, for the gentleman. Sir, after hearing why we had to make the decision that, you know, we're making, did that satisfy you? I mean, did, did you get a better understanding? No? Did you at least get an understanding?
Yeah, so unfortunately, if you want to speak, we'll have to get you back in the microphone. Because she decided to not ask the question while you were standing there, but.
Uh, be quite honest, no, I can't understand why we can't use surpluses. Uh, I understand it's from the previous year, but I think that uh, we need to be uh, more frugal in our spending. And um, yeah, after hearing the hundreds of thousands of dollars for new vehicles, you know, that just doesn't ring well with me. I used to be a business owner and sometimes if I had to replace a vehicle, instead of buy a new one, I bought a used one. You know, trying to be responsible. And uh, unfortunately, there's not enough citizens here that are objecting to this uh, resolution and that's a sad state of affair, but uh, I, to answer your question, no.
Sure.
Yeah, I, you know, I'll just simply say my, the thirty years I've been doing this, not just for the city, but for others, is hardly ever pans out to buy used trucks and, you know, vehicles. Sometimes it works out to buy big equipment that used, but um, you end up replacing the trucks in a couple of years anyway, after making massive repairs.
Sure, so you know, the, the point tonight is uh, simply to approve the final millage, but you got to understand the process that got us here. You know, we had quite a few special workshops. We've had probably, would you say a dozen meetings in total? Um, discussing the, the different aspects of the budget with multiple hours each time. So the budget process starts in July. So if you want to know in great detail, I mean, the copy of the city budget is right there. You're more than welcome to look through all you want, watch the previous tapes of all the discussions. But for next year, if you want to uh, know the full process, start sometime in July, uh, possibly beginning of August and you can sit here as long as you want and go through all the same process of what we have to hear and the whole thing, so. I would invite you back next year. All right.
Well, there was a couple of years ago, actually last couple of years, we had to take out uh, I think it was a one year additional million dollars for the sheriff department where they increased the salaries of the sheriff that does the policing in Avon Park. As well as replacing of their vehicles. So we give them, I believe it's two hundred thousand dollars every year to replace vehicles for the sheriff department. That was something up until about three years ago, we didn't have to do, but the sheriff finally came and said he wanted Avon Park to pay their fair share. So we basically, in next year or two, will basically have doubled the uh, price that we had to pay for the sheriff department. And in that one year, we actually went under our balance because we had to take money out of our reserves and so we, our reserves were lower than what the required limit was. So that's part of the reasons why we're trying to get back and we luckily have got back because of the, the funds that we got from the government, uh, but uh, next year will be a different story. So like you said, it's a long process and we're more than welcome. We'd love to have to come to every meeting and go through it with us.
Yep. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion. This will be for a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty-six as presented.
I'll make a motion, we approve uh, resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-six as presented, please.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next up, we have resolution twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
A resolution of the city of Avon Park of Highlands County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, providing for an effective date.
All right, once again, this will be a public hearing for resolution twenty-two dash twenty-seven, so be approving the final budget. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak or ask any questions about the final budget? Going once. Going twice. All right, the public hearing for resolution twenty-two dash twenty-seven is now closed. Bring it back to the councils. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, is there anything from the staff before we take a vote? Okay. All right, we'll be looking for a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
Make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty-seven, please.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number twelve, we have fiscal year twenty, twenty, excuse me, twenty-two dash twenty-three, this will be the, for the C F R P C Planning Advisory Services Agreement. Now, we don't have anyone here from their organization to say anything, so Mark, do you have anything to add?
Um, it's forty thousand dollars. It went up from five thousand dollars last year and as I sent them an email and they sent this to me, I think it's the best money the city spends.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff on that?
Yeah, I wanted to know what was the extra five thousand for?
Because they have done so much more work for us with people, um, developers wanting to come here. They're in, we're having, almost every month we have the uh, P N Z, they're at that, there's just a lot more work and it's, it's everywhere they work, but that, that, like I said, this is nothing compared to what they do for us for hour wise.
Yeah, they're, it's like Mark said, it's some of the best money you spend.
Did it anytime, I call them, Jerry calls them, we're on calls with Jeff a lot with um, it, it's, it's it's ridiculous how little we pay them for what they do.
Sure. Yeah, once upon a time, we had, you know, one, two, maybe three houses a year that were being built in Avon Park. And uh, as Randy said last time, we have almost thirty that are currently going on right now. So, the, the building is up.
Zoning changes, the people want to, you know, put businesses in that we want to bring here, they got to change zoning, so.
Every time a property change hands, somebody wants to do something with it, you know, or see what they can do with it, that all requires their time.
Uh, you know, they're, they're in this area, but I actually talked them into serving uh, city of San Antonio. I, I do in Pasco County. No, it's not their area because Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council doesn't do this. And so they are doing it there now. It's just, it's really good money, otherwise I would have to do it and and I'm, I paid, I get paid a little, little bit more, I think, for the hour than they do.
Hourly rate's not as appealing.
Not to you.
Okay. Uh, did you guys reach out to Jennifer and ask anything about uh?
I haven't got a hold of her yet, no.
All right. Any other questions on this agreement? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve, I have number D twelve for the Planning Advisory Service Agreement.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number thirteen, this will be for emergency purchase of South Lake Isis lift station. I see Rick's name there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is for the lift station down at Lake Isis. The lining of the well is worn off of it. There's no lining left on it and we've been out there making repairs to the risers on it and we've got clamps on top of clamps, basically. And now the bowl at the bottom where the actual pump sits at, this bolt is in the floor, has come loose, so it's kind of swinging around and we're currently running on one pump and we have our diesel backup pump hooked up to, for a secondary. I saw we were trying to get this fixed. We thought maybe we can lift it next year, but it's, we, we need to get this rolling down.
How long have you been having problems with this lift station?
Uh, we've been trying to repair it probably for the past four months here and there and it's just, it's, it's the H two S is eaten. The riser's up where it's just got pinholes all in it, so when the pump runs, it's just spraying all over the inside. And we were dealing with that, but now that the bases come loose, it's just, it's just moving around slamming into the pump, so we can't even run it currently.
Okay, does this lift station take flow from the industrial area that's to the north now?
No, sir, it takes from North Isis.
Okay.
You got on the north side, comes in there and then all the north up there comes into it. And then it pumps into the same manhole that actually Walmart pumps into, which Walmart receives new core.
I see. Okay. All right, do we have any questions on this?
Yeah, I have a question for Rick. How, how soon will this be done, this emergency?
That is a question I cannot answer. Um, unfortunately, right now trying to get supplies is uh, is a challenge.
Mm-hmm.
So the, the contractor is ready to move. It would be as quick as he could get the materials.
So we're looking at weeks, months. Reason why I'm asking is because the emergency and the um, the untreated wastewater into like us, that's, that's why I'm asking.
We have an emergency pump there currently, our, our backup pump.
So you do have a backup?
Yes, ma'am, it's above ground diesel backup pump that we're using. It's our only backup pump that we have. So if we have another station go down, we do not have a backup, so we need to get this moving now.
Okay.
Right.
The, the, the reason for the merge is to take forty-five to sixty days to put out bids, get them back, select one. And Rick says we don't have that time to wait. And like he says, the, the, the vendor can say, I can do it, but it's, it's materials that we're dealing with everywhere and especially those in construction. No, it's, it, it doesn't matter what we're dealing with, they can't find stuff, so.
I really don't know why you guys are worried because the worst case scenario is that we have a major hurricane coming our way, so.
We, we need to get working.
We need every generator we can get.
All right, any other questions on this?
No, I'm just sure that the contractor realizes what emergency is, just like uh, Ms. Brittany said, that uh, once we pass this, that we, they need to do due diligence as quickly as they possibly can.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions, we'll be looking for a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the D thirteen, emergency purchase for the lift station.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Let's call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
As we're saying to the audience too, um, you know, we did have a couple of public hearings there, but if there's any questions that you guys have on anything, it's not a public hearing, you're more than welcome to ask those questions. Item number fourteen, we have a bid award for community center roof replacement. Mark?
The community center roof, which is in dire need, it's almost an emergency there. We had six, um, went out the bid, got six bidders. The, the first two uh, lowest were non-responsive. One of them, as you see in um, the nice bid award recommendation that Andy Mogul typed up for you. There were several things that the second lowest one, there was an addendum and they were supposed to, I forgot how many sheets of plywood, ten say that the, the bid said and the addendum said how much more per sheet if they need more. They did not turn it in, so Andy got me, said that's non-responsive and I said, it's kind of a low amount, let me run it by Jerry. Jerry said, he was making decision, yes, but get with a contract attorney. And um, so I had Andy get with him and he said, yes, it's non-responsive. It was an addendum they didn't reply to, plus the, with wood prices going up and down all over the place sometimes, that yes, you can um, move on to your next bidder and he was fine with that. So, um,
Going up today, too.
L Cobb Construction was uh, the next lower and that's who our recommendation is to you to accept uh, their bid.
So we see here that uh, the lowest bidder uh, and the proposed selected bidder, uh, there's quite a bit of discrepancy there, you know, there's roughly seventy-eight thousand dollars, so I would just simply ask, um, is that something that we have to abide by with saying that they're a non-responsive bidder or?
I think that'd be their choice, Rick, Jerry?
Yeah, right.
It'd be their choice, you mean?
Yours, councils.
Okay. I see.
Or is it just a recommendation?
Got it. The only reason why I say so is given the amount of money um, that we're talking about here, it's not as if it's a few thousand dollars, it's, you know, seventy-eight thousand dollars, so. Also, the uh, the contractor um, that did have the lowest number, I'll say, um, has done work for the city in the past as well. So I would just again, ask if there's any reason or any recourse as to why we couldn't possibly accept the lowest bid.
Yeah, if it's non-responsive, you're supposed to move on to the next, next bidder.
Okay.
And so I, well, you have rules for the, the bidding process and um, it's not, not just um, you know, makes it a problem not to move on to the next one, but it also, you lose credibility with regard to people that, you know, in the, in the industry that.
Sure.
So.
I didn't want to put us in liability for some type of uh, suit for the.
Well.
What, what would have been?
You can gar- can't guarantee anything, but uh, according to, to um, You can gar, can't guarantee anything, but, uh, according to, to, um, Frazier, it's if, if it's, um, it's non-responsive is what he said, right?
Correct.
Yes, it's non-responsive.
And, and I will add, and it was verbal from Rand, or Andy to me, but the lowest bidder, when they opened them up, he, he made the statement that, wow, I hope I didn't underbid this.
I see. Okay. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead.
This is for Jerry. So Jerry, that would put us in liability if we went with the lowest bidder? I heard what you said, but as a council, can we still vote on the lowest bid and it put us in some type of liability?
In theory, the second lower bidder could say that we are the lowest bidder because the other bidder was non-responsive, therefore you didn't select the low bidder, us. And so that would open us up to them. Now, because we're going to the next lowest bidder, will, can the lowest bidder say, well, you know, you, that, you know, wasn't non-responsive, it was just a little thing we could fix, you know, and, and, and fix up, but according to, um, um, Frazier Caraway, our construction attorney at the Saxon Gilmore, it was non-responsive, so, you know, we should, we would be in a better position to move to, move to the next one than, than stay with the first.
Any other questions?
Is, is there an issue going with a building contractor, even though they're putting on a roof, they're not a roofing contractor? I know he has a subcontractor listed that's a roofing contractor, but is there an issue with that?
I, I, I can't tell you that I'm an expert in that area, but I, um, I would be an, a question for Frazier, but my, my gut instinct to that is general contractors are capable of doing most things. You know, there's some things that they're not, uh, qualified to do, but the, um, roofing contractors is specialty.
Right, a general contractor can't pull a permit on a roof, that's a, a rehab, a redo. Um, which is probably why he has a subcontractor listed that's a roofing contractor, I just wanted to verify that it was okay to hire a construction company who will then sub it out to a roofing contractor, even though our contract will be with the general contractor.
That's fine, as long as the work gets done, in the proper manner.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I, I'm curious how this might work, should, um, we sustain more damage to the roof due to the hurricane?
Right, it's, it's an unknown at this point. I, I asked a similar question today, is, you know, we actually had a leak in that, in that roof, which is why we're pushing so hard to get the roof done. And then, of course, you see the hurricane out there, so it's anybody's guess, and, you know, to take that into account now is kind of a waste of time, just because, you know, we could get this hurricane and it increased to a five, you get a direct hit, and now you know, every roof's torn off, you know, we just don't know. Or it may miss us entirely, so.
But if more damage was done and we ended up getting insurance money or something like that, we could still keep this contract, but then pay for it
Correct.
With insurance versus out of our general fund.
That's right.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll be looking, uh, for a motion.
I make a recommendation, we, uh, through the item D fourteen to the bid, uh, placement done by, recommended by the city, uh, staff members. I'll be best for Cobb.
Be contract award to L Cobb Construction, is that what you're referring?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
I'm going to abstain, applicant is a cousin.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
I'll abstain, as the applicant is a cousin.
Motion passes.
Mayor, before we go on, can I add reference to community center, please? Actually, I closed the community center last week to, uh, people who had rented it, we had to let them know, sorry, you can't use it. The whole bottom first floor on the west side, the whole thing is leaking like a sieve. We had water all over the place, we got it, Rick's guys came out and, um, spent most of the day, was it Saturday?
Yes, it's Saturday.
Saturday to, and get the fire department, um, with the chief and got their big fans because we had someone that rented out for a funeral next day, and we thought we'd do the best, that's on Rick, he did a great job there. But I went in the, the next day, then the Monday, and it was, there's no way liability on us, what's going on in there with the leaking into the electricity and into the kitchen area, so it's bad, it needs to be big time replaced, so the upstairs was all right though, right, Rick?
Yes, the upstairs are right, the, the roof, kind of, it's a membrane, and the sun's eating it up so much, the mesh that they make it out to make the membrane, it just looks like screen material, we're just, we've patched it and patched it, patched it, there's just, there's just no more passionate anymore.
Is it possible to put a tarp over it or something?
We, we pretty much, they've been on the roof and pretty much done everything they can to get it to stop as much as they can, and then trying to catch the water that's coming in certain areas, but it's getting worse. And talk about patch, it appears they did a patch a few years ago on the, he just did the west side, and I think it was Cobb Roofing at the time, um, one of the Cobbs, and that wasn't leaking, but it's all gonna be replaced this time all at once, so.
It's a TPO roof. It's similar to a, uh, pool liner that's been sitting out in the sun too long.
Right, yes, sir.
Good way to put it.
We, we ordered some, they're like, uh, look like umbrellas upside down.
Mm-hmm.
When they have a hole in the center, when they put garbage cans underneath them, instead of it just leaking everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
Take the ceiling tiles down lights that just came in today, so that'll be going up tomorrow before the hurricane. And we've got brand new ninety-five gallon garbage, you know, wheels to catch it, so we're hoping to preserve everything the way it is without getting drywall or anything like that, so we're doing the best we can with what we've got to work with.
Okay.
When was the last time the roof had a complete roof and replacement?
Eighties?
Uh-huh.
When, when the mayor was, well, he wasn't even old enough to play tennis, probably, I don't know.
Probably wasn't even thought of.
So it's very
Probably when it was It kinda goes back to what we've been talking about during budgeting, that there was no maintenance done. You know, that's why we gotta get around to all these roofs and figure if they got five years, ten years, and get them on the, the CIP, that's our next plan. The city hall roof's gonna, we've, we got somebody up there finally, and yes, that needs to be replaced, and we certainly don't want that to start leaking, so.
Yeah, as with most, the, you know, buildings, unless the city actually built the building, now this building was an old bank, and that bank went bankrupt, oddly enough, and, uh, you know, the city came to own it, uh, I think it was actually donated, uh, I wanna say by the, um, Ben Hill Griffin family, I wanna say. But anyway, it was given to the city a long, long time ago, and that roof had been put on many, many years before that building was ever donated, so. It's definitely had a good, long life, so. Any other questions? Okay, so we, uh, we had a motion in a second, we've already had the vote, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, moving on to item number fifteen, this will be roadway resurfacing of South Brawn Avenue from Hal McRae Boulevard to East Cornell Street. Rick?
This road here that, that we're looking at, it has, it has a lot of alligator cracking going on with it. Um, it's got a lot of patches from pa, previous, uh, roadwork being done from utilities. Uh, starting to ravel and break down the edges of the road. Our parent complex and Taylor will going in there, it's all busted up, also the the manholes, they're there, the one on the corner, we've actually had to weld the lid down, so it needs to be replaced, so it would be a good time to replace that manhole when they're, when they're resurfacing the road.
Okay. So with the alligator cracking, uh, obviously that's a sign of base failure, right?
Uh, it's, it's really not the basis, just the, it's the actual asphalt coming apart, so it gets to diamonds, like, you know, like in the back of an alligator, more or less, is what they're, is what, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. I was just simply asking the question to make sure that if it was a base failure, that the base would also be replaced.
At this time, it doesn't look like the base is failing.
Okay. Any other questions on item number fifteen? Seeing none, we'll be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number D fifteen for the proven expenditure of thirty-five thousand five hundred and thirty for resurfacing South Brawn to Hal McRae and Cornell.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any attorney updates?
Um, Mark, do you want me to handle these agreements?
Sure.
And, okay, so, um, you'll, on your desk, you'll find, um, a staging site agreement. This is with, um, between the city and Duke Energy. Um, we've gone back and forth and negotiated, this is as far as they'll go. Um, not preferred on our part with regard to some of the provisions they wanted to take out regarding insurance and identification. Uh, but as I understand it, this is a very, there's a very strong want, desire, whatever for the, the, them to stage in our area, because it puts us, uh, in the center of their operation zone for restoring electricity after hurricane. Um, there's nothing in the contract that guarantees they'll do that. Um, but that's it, and I guess the one thing that also bothered me was that, that the, um, on top of those other issues I mentioned, that was the, um, it's a eight-year agreement. I, you know, I prefer to go with less unless somebody's actually building something or, you know, um, uh, they're actually moving equipment to a place, or, you know, uh, they're basically in, in, incurring a lot of expense for the contract, and I don't think they're doing that, but anyway, it's an eight-year agreement. You need this agreement in order for them to be responsive to this hurricane. If you don't do this agreement, then it's the next hurricane before, before they'll do the, the staging on that. Um, as, uh, Mark did, did, uh, go to the effort of speaking with their, their person over there, and they are going to still, um, stage here if we can get an agreement tonight, so I just had to give you my misgivings on it.
Oh, just jumped, they don't know if they will or not, when I, because they had kinda dropped the ball, I guess the guy was off or whatever. So I asked him today where we are on this, and he came back and said, well, we're not sure if we're gonna use that area or not. Well, before I know it, their attorney's sending Jerry, um, his red line mark and okay and stuff, so I can't say for sure they're there, but it, depending where the storm goes, how big it is, it may be an area that they do decide to go to.
But I, I think if you, if the, the city ends up signing it and appro, agreeing to it, perhaps, you know, um, we can say to them, well, we'll provide this to you if you're gonna agree to do it here. I mean, otherwise, why, why would, you know, why not wait and see if we can get a, a better deal on some of these things? I mean, I, I don't think they will negotiate more, but that's really up to you, as it's, it's in contract, we call it bargaining power. You know, who's got the most bargaining power is who gets everything they want, you know, and, uh, sometimes it's both want something. They want someplace to stage, and you want them to stage here so that you get response early, so I leave that to you to decide. Is, uh, our insurance counsel has said that's, you know, not his preferred language that he put in, but, you know, it's not a, not gonna be a catastrophe for you if you did accept it, so he said, you know, if you wanna go ahead with it, it's really matter of bargain, bargaining power as well.
Yep. The other thing, uh, that's going on with Duke currently is the industrial outlined area. Was a readiness plan, a readiness site. So, you know, I see it as a good thing, I think that, uh, obviously having them staged here is gonna benefit us more than it would, uh, potentially hurt us. It also shows that we're, um, wanting to play ball with them, um, in any of the future industrial development sites that they wanna do inside of our area, which obviously we desperately want. Um, so I think we should move forward with it.
I actually think that we're fortunate that there, that a company like Duke would be willing to, uh, to come to Avon Park and stage here. I think it's definitely not only for the benefit of the City of Avon Park, but also for the county, as well some of the other surrounding cities and areas. And, uh, I also know that, uh, a lot of the, uh, uh, luncheons that we have on a monthly basis, um, that, uh, George puts on, that they're over Jack or under, they do a lot of the, uh, programs where they come out and talk about exactly what Duke Energy is up to in the state of Florida and, and what their direction is. And, uh, I also know companies like this, public utilities are self-insured, so I believe that any damage or anything that could possibly come, which I can't imagine, their job is to, is repair and not to cause damage, so I think that I'm all for this, and I'm grateful that they're willing to come here, and I sure hope that they show up maybe tomorrow or the next day. But, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to have Duke Energy, that's for sure.
I, I didn't mention it, I don't think, but, uh, you know, there's no, they're not paying us anything for the use of the property, I just wanna make sure I know that you're aware of that.
That's fine, they're, they're, they're paying for our own protection, I think that's wonderful. I think it's a plus for the city.
Mr. Bird, how many years do you recommend?
Uh, you know, it, it depends on how much, uh, if I would, I would send it back to them for a three-year agreement, if I were, if I had my choice. But I don't think that they're gonna, you know, accept it, but, but if that, you know, that would be my choice. Because in three years, you know, uh, you have this year and a couple more years, and that gives them plenty of time to, to, you know, prepare the site and things like that, whatever they need to do. Eight years is a long time for, for that, especially, um, uh, given the fact that, that, that they're being, you know, obstinatious with regard to some of the provisions we normally like. But, like I said, you could say, well, you have to take it, it's three years, and then they can come back and say, ah, never mind, we'll do it somewhere else, so I, you know, that's, I, I, all I can do is advise, and, and, uh, the risk associated with a deal is, is yours, you know.
I, I feel like a longer deal lets them know that we're willing to, to go the long haul and make something big out of it.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't want them just to come for three years and set something up, and then, you know, if they're afraid that that's all we're going to, to commit to is three years, then how much are they willing to give us? If we're willing to say, here's your eight years, come on down.
Yep.
I feel like it's more encouraging that, to them to even increase what they're offering.
Well, just bear in mind, they could stage here, and there's nothing that says that they need to do anything, and you're, you're, they can do yours last. And, you know, for eight years, there'd be nothing you could do about it also.
They go, like, a planning utility commission.
I, I just, it's a matter of trust, you know, and like I said, bargaining power, so that's, I leave that to you.
And we might get a major hurricane every single year for the next eight years, or we might not get one for eighty years, we just don't know, so.
Right.
Mayor, I got one thing, Jerry?
Yes.
And, um, cause this was last minute today, we were, and I appreciate all the work Jerry's done on this also. Um, on page three of nine, on the top, under three. And next to the last sentence, where's, well, third one down, when they're talking about, you know, no drums, containers over a gallon, and and it goes down to, um, approved by the city manager. They had worked on, actually, when you were on vacation, I worked with the representative to put together this list that the attorney sent us, and I've got it on the back of this, it's called Exhibit Z, but should that be changed? Cause I don't think anywhere in here it talks to that, or is it okay just to have this on the back to this pre-approved material, which is material that they would normally have?
Well, I think a, attaching it, the approved version of what they have really benefits them. So if they wanna add that on there, that's fine, I don't think we have to, but I, you know, I'd be fine with adding it, obviously, there's no problem.
Okay, as long as it's fine attached, because these are ones that basically I've already approved, that, that, these are things they're doing out there, so I wouldn't, they wouldn't have to, they didn't wanna have to call me up and get me out of bed in the morning and say, yeah, you can have that, you can have that, um, mercury vapor light out or something.
Yeah, well, and, and, um, they could change later, and then, you know, maybe, and, and then they'd have to still have your, your approval, so maybe a benefit not to have it attached, that you have to go through the process of approving the amendment to the agreement and things like that. Whereas if, you know, if you're using your, you know, you're using your discretion with regard to, you know, the proper stuff that's out there and how they're handling.
That's okay, I just wanna make sure, or if they approve it and the mayor signs it, I just wanna make sure we're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
With that being said, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the agreement between the city and, uh, Duke Energy for their staging site.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
A second, uh, item you'll find on your desk is a memorandum of understanding between the Ford Division of Emergency Management and the City of Avon Park. I, I mean, I would really love to say, let's go ahead with this, because obviously we need, we need to, we'd like to have them locate in a logi, logistical staging area, you know, here in the city, but this agreement is, um, as you'll see from my notes, um, I mean, some of the notes aren't, aren't that substantial, but, um, right now, they have a, uh, a term of a minimum of thirty days, and then there's no, really, based on their reference to section ten, there's no termination date. Now, um, reasonably, you could probably argue that, you know, there, there's no reason for them to be there anymore, once the, everything is taken care of, and they're, they've done all the services that they're willing to do in the area and so on, and that's probably what, what would be done. But, um, I leave that to you, it's, it's vague, and, um, I vague agreements lead to litigation, which is the second part that I really have a problem with. And that's the fact that they want to litigate in Leon County, which is Tallahassee. And, uh, which means the, you know, um, well, if it's your insurance company, your insurance company will handle that no problem. But if it's us, then you'd have, we'd have to hire somebody in, in Tallahassee to do it because, you know, and, and your people would have to go up for, conceivably may have to go up for trials and, and, uh, things like that. I, I'd always prefer that we had the venue be our hometown here. So. Um, so you look, I have some, several other, other, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask if you've, uh, seen in the, the agreements with any other towns?
No.
Okay. Obviously this is very short notice for us.
Yeah.
Uh, so the point is in the response to the, uh, the storm that is out there currently and that is the sole focus? Or is this the intent for it to be a long-term agreement?
Uh, it's, I think the intent is, is supposed to be for this event.
So would we be able to just simply add language in there and approve it with the language?
Yeah, we could add lang- add language, uh, red line and send it back to them. If you want. So the problem is under, under item two on the first page is that it refers to section ten. So I mean, I could make that change and, and, uh, because it, and they obviously had a section ten that was different than what it's there now.
Right.
And they pulled it out for some reason, but I think it was supposed to me, um, describe the hurricane event and things like that, that, you know, and I could pull it out and just refer to her, um, services that are being provided by FEMA, directly to, you know, local people from this, this area for Hurricane Ian. And, you know, that, that would, uh, take care of that one.
Yeah.
It's up to you if you want to litigate in, in Leon County. That's, that's, um, your prerogative. Um, but you most likely, if your insurance doesn't handle whatever the case is, whatever the matter is, um, and it certainly wouldn't on a breach of contract, um, it wouldn't handle, uh, it wouldn't handle that. But if there was a breach, if there was a contract issue regarding some tort action, they would, they would handle that. But if it's a contract deal that we're, we're arguing over, like they're supposed to be out of there and they're not, that would, we would have to hire somebody in, in Leon County, which is how Tallahassee basically.
Well, I think if we had to litigate something with the state, I think it would be a difficult time trying to win that case because it would probably take us the rest of our lives if we, we had any plans to try to win it. Well, and since they're actually just asking for this one pick or storm, I, I, I'm okay with, I'm here again. I'll say I, I welcome them to come here. I'm glad that they're willing to come here because I know the last hurricane we had, there, there are a lot of people were confused and where to go get this and where to call this. And I, I think this is something that we need to look to as a city, uh, in a long-term event to have some type of a plan that as a, a city of Avon Park, that we have a staging location for ourselves to have vendors or people bring in ice and food and things to, to distribute throughout the city. Because if we lose electricity and a lot of people can't cook and that, and that I think this is a great opportunity for us to come to our city again. And you're right, it's, uh, it's their agreement, but, uh, I think it benefits the city and I, I don't, I don't, I had no,
Okay.
I have no problem with it, but I understand the legal process you're saying, but I think at this moment, I don't think we have much time to, to do anything but to accept it and move forward.
Accept it as it is.
Yeah.
JT is here and he's the one that's actually been in contact with emergency management. He might want to explain some.
Hello, council. How are you? Well, how are you all today?
Doing well.
Awesome. Thanks for having us. Yeah, the DEM, uh, negotiations have been ongoing since even before we introduced ourselves, uh, to this fine city. Uh, the reason why it's thirty days, this is very standard, even if, uh, for example, one of y'all wanted to put a staging area in your front lawn, you would get the same MOU. So it doesn't matter if it's the city of Tallahassee or the city of Miami or the Orange County Convention Center. It's the same agreement. The reason why it's at thirty days is because they don't know when the storm is going to, uh, resolve. Or most recently, if we get into a pandemic issue again, and then that's a year long, till we have COVID testing going on or some sort of viral testing. So this is not just specifically for named storms. Uh, I'd also, um, I'm very pleased to mention that Kenneth DeCastro, the chief logistics officer, did reach out to our organization this morning and asked if we could, and of course we told them yes, and they said they'd be here tonight or in the morning. Um, they asked about this agreement. We've had it for at least a year to try to at least get to some sort of legal basis. So I don't want to turn them away at this time. So at the very least, let's accommodate them for this storm. Uh, and also it dovetails into the bigger picture of what we've been trying to do here. Uh, Avon Park Airport has been neglected for grant funds for a long time. The only way that we can super, or supersede, let's say Tampa Airport or Orlando Airport, excuse me, is to have an emergency support function. So how is DEM going to be, be stationed here on a full-time basis? When's that happens? Now we can have a new taxiway put in, uh, parallel taxiway that the FAA has not wanted to fund anymore. But now they're going to be forced to fund that because of the ESF function that we're providing. So this is our opportunity, uh, our interview, if you will, to make sure that everything goes appropriately, uh, and above board. Uh, that the, uh, public asset will see very, very much long-term benefit from it.
So are you, are you saying that this is intended to go on beyond just the storm then?
It's typically a standard MOU that you would renew annually.
But it, it doesn't, it doesn't say, it said thirty days, it says a minimum thirty days. But you're saying that it's supposed to be perpetual?
It's not perpetual. The last time that the legislative body met on the unified logistics plan, state nine, and which that annex is what we're under, is what governs this process. So that's, I mean, even if they wanted to put an armory out there, that would still be the same MOU agreement that everybody would have.
I, well, it's hard for me to believe that, given the fact that it's got a typo in it. I mean, it's referring to section ten, which is nonsense. Um, but, you know, I, I, it's up to you. I, I did, but I would, you know, there's no identification in here. There's, um, um, and maybe you trust the state. I don't know if that's good, but I leave that to you. Um, and then, uh, I, under item six says that, um, you know, they're, we're supposed to allow them, um, ingress and egress at all times. I have no problem with that, but I think that they should have identification and, uh, show identification, given this is a secure area, the airport. Um, we don't leave them, they may, it may be not somebody related to these people, you know, trying to go on site at that point. So, you know, my, my, I would like to see them be required to have identification. But I leave it to you, you know, these, as always, these are your agreements and, um, you can go forward with it as is or try to get them, at least try to say it's going to be for this storm event, and then we can have a better agreement, maybe MOU. I, I just did, so I find it hard to believe that other cities have accepted this.
JT, you mentioned that, uh, we've had this agreement for a year. Is that true?
Yeah, the last time I, uh, I've tried to bring this up over a few months, uh, over the past years. So we have time to hash this out. I do have all the email correspondence and dates. Um, at first we didn't fill it out because we didn't want to overstep, uh, Jerry Burr's position or the city manager's position. But I also don't want to call the director of DEM within twelve hours of him asking of us to be of service, uh, with red line changes. So even if it's just for this one agreement and, you know, I might get a call at midnight and say, you know what? The storm's going north. It's a non-issue. We're not going to actually stage there. But just from what I know to date and how long that we've had that agreement, I don't want to email them that tonight to accommodate that by morning.
So you can see from what you're gathering is our intention that we want to limit this just to this storm event until we can get a better agreement.
And that's fine. Yeah.
So what we're proposing is basically adding some red, red line language, uh, that would spell it out that it's just for this storm event.
Fantastic.
Okay.
We can make that work.
I can't see how they'd have any problem with that, if that's their intent.
Absolutely.
If they're intent to have a perpetual agreement, I would have to say that, that the city would be foolish to agree to it.
And DEM can't do that based on the unified logistics plan. They have to do that annually. So if the, for example, Orlando Convention Center no longer wanted to host during hurricane season because they're doing a school function, that's their right as the owner of that asset to say, this year you are no longer able to come here. So it's not perpetually.
But if we can have a, you know, a negotiated agreement, I'm sure the city would like to have even a more long-term agreement with them with regard to staging.
Right.
But, you know, this is not the agreement for that, I don't think.
So Jerry, do you have a proposed set of language that we could add to this that would isolate it just to this storm event?
Yeah, I would just simply say, um,
And can we go ahead and approve it with that change?
Yeah, how about if you go, um, into the other stuff and I'll just grab something with my pen while we're sitting here. Okay.
All right. Well, the only other thing that we have, other than the city manager report, is the resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Are we good to go ahead and read that there, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We have a resolution of the city council of the city of Avon Park, Florida declaring a state of emergency, authorizing and directing the city manager to take whatever prudent actions which may be necessary to protect the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of the city and customers of the city's utility systems pursuant to the, to this declaration, ratifying and affirming such actions taken by the city manager prior to the, to this declaration and providing for an effective date. So this is basically just declaring a state of emergency, uh, similar to how we did in the past hurricane, um, allowing the city manager to go ahead and take whatever steps necessary in the event that we have a major storm action.
Correct. And the county just approved theirs this morning at nine.
Anything, uh, that we should know about this or?
No, I, this is, uh, very, you know, shockingly similar to the COVID one, except that, uh, you know, it's specific to this hurricane. And, um, the, 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 uh, city manager's powers then would be more restricted with regard to these hurricane issues and so on, where COVID was much more broad, given the fact that, you know, could be around people, you know, and, and, you know, perhaps masking is required here and there. So it's, it's, uh,
Okay.
And then, um, he's supposed to keep in touch with the mayor with regard to these things. So at least he has some interplay liaison with the, uh, the city council, even though you're not meeting.
And he did during COVID.
That's right. He certainly did.
So, uh, so then af- after this is finished, is there any reason why we can't get a more permanent uh, resolution set up that, that you could work on and give to us?
Or, or this, no, yeah, these are, these are all intended to be just strictly for the emergency and they're specific to that emergency.
Okay.
In fact, that's why they're only allowed for seven days. And if it wants to, you want to go longer, then there's a provision that allows for extension.
Okay.
But then that's extension expires at this, the next council meeting, at which time they have to justify what extension and you guys can either approve it or, or not approve it and then go forward, you know, when there are seven days. So I mean, it's, it's just that, it's, they have it restricted time-wise for that very reason.
Any other questions about the resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight?
Uh, I just like the part under number E where it says utilization of volunteer workers. So if that comes, everybody be ready to volunteer for help.
Okay. Yep, I do. We'll be looking for a motion.
I'm making a motion. We approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benar?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Jerry, do you have language on that, uh, MOU yet?
I do. So if you look at paragraph two on the first page, um, the, um, the last sentence there, it's, um, basically starts at the, the next to last sentence, says a minimum of thirty days with the exclusive right of DEM, DEM to extend until DEM, DEM no longer needs the licensed area for emergency response activities. And then be, between that and the definition term, term, I've inserted the language that says related to Hurricane Ian or related tropical storm or depression, because it could downgrade and still create a problem, come back and hit us again, whatever. So, um, that, that should satisfy them. I, I can't see why it wouldn't if that, if that's where you go. And, and he's giving us the, the thumb up. JT's giving us the thumbs up.
Yes, I'll be.
Anyone wish to make that motion?
I'll move.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions or anything to add?
Uh, no, thank you all very much. I think this is very, very good for all involved. Um, would y'all be executing that first and then have me deliver it? Or would you like me to have them sign first and then retire?
I'll have it amended in the morning, um, you know, first thing before I do anything. So.
If, if y'all could execute first, then I'll just send it out. That'd be fantastic, but I'll CC y'all parties.
And could you make just clear to them that we, you know, if we can do a more, I guess bilateral agreement, let's say, instead of a, a one-sided agreement, if we could do a more comprehensive agreement, um, you know, we could do longer term.
I, I believe we'll have the best EM contract in the state within the next twelve months.
All right, great. Thanks.
Which will always also protect fam when they take over.
Okay.
That's right.
I, I have one question for them, Jerry. Basically because they're just doing this one storm, this is something that we didn't have a, another agreement, this would basically just come like twenty-four to forty-eight hours every time the storm was approaching. We had to go through one of these. So would it be, wouldn't it be to our best interest to have something?
Well, I would, you know, Mush Brother have something that we prepare for. Now, I, I know JT said he sent it a while back, but, um, you know, we, we were not working on that because we were working on other agreements, real, you know, related to Duke and, uh, which we negotiated for quite a while. And, and then, uh, we hired the, the insurance attorney to, um, advise us on that area. All, and there's nothing in here about insurance and I, but I'm sure the state's good for it.
I think so.
So.
Uh, if, if I may on the insurance, I re-verified the date. Whoever comes on to the, or whatever pollutant, pollutant it is within the airport boundary, our current insurance covers. So we don't inspect planes that come in and out. I mean, it's kind of a, whether they're fueling up or leaving or not, we don't exactly know what their cargo is and it's not a responsibility to check their cargo. But if there's an incident that happens, our insurance will already cover that, no matter what the entity, whether that be a private GA pilot, whether that be Duke Energy or whether that be the state of Florida. So, uh, yeah, I, the insurance is good.
Well, can you ask them at least to have these people, I'm sure they provide them with badges. But, you know, if they're going to come on your secure area, um, in, in the airport, it seemed to me like you'd want them to have badges so you know that they're related to DEM.
That's correct. Si- same as Duke. There's, I will forge you the United, uh, Logistics Code Plan Annex Nine, which goes step by step from ninety-six hours before the storm, that we get notified when we get spun up. What are the protocols for people entering and leaving? This has been, you know, not a new process, clearly identified, um, many, many times before.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. There's no further questions. We'll go ahead and call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benar?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. City manager report.
Um, FAA, last week, uh, we heard back from them on the scope that, um, Lowell redid and sent to them. They liked it. They, my word, prettied it up a little bit and they looked nicer. Um, sent it back and we have to get an independent fees on the, um, the engineering. So we have to take our numbers out and find another engineer that specializes in that area to say what they would charge. And Lowell is coming up with two or three for us to look at. So that's going to cost the city money, but, um, FAA told us it would be reimbursed. So again, I think that really we're working with a couple of good people up there. We're actually moving ahead and these people now want us to get, maybe they want headquarters off their, their back, but, um, they're doing a good job for us. So that's where we're on a. Wednesday, the city's going to be closed. I talked to mayor earlier. The storm is going to, according to, to our one o'clock hearing, and I'm sure it's probably moved a little since then, we, myself, the chief and Rick were on with a bunch of other people in the EOC briefing. Um, Wednesday, probably between, I think ten and twelve is what they came up with. But again, it, no one knows which way the storm's going to move or how hard it's going to hit, but they're looking at least five inches of rain for us in our county with some winds, but it's mostly the rain, but that may change. And, um, I talked to the PIO Gloria. She wanted to know if we were closing too. I said, yes, on Wednesday, we don't want our workers in here. But the, the Hounds County Board, um, is closing, um, Fire Rescue Administration, the courthouse, clerk of courts, tax collectors, property appraiser, supervisor of elections, city of Sebring, city of Avon Park, town of Lake Placid, and I just got an email, Spring Lakes is also closing. So we'll be closed on Wednesday and we'll be feeling out Thursday to see how things are going there.
Yeah, I was just in the, uh, Bowling Green meeting, as I mentioned, um, before I came here and, and, um, they, uh, emergency people told them, um, eight to ten o'clock at, uh, Tuesday night, that's when they're expecting to get hit in Bowling Green. I would think you guys are going to be pretty close to that.
Yeah. Probably a little after midnight, the way they're talking, but like I said, that, as they said, this thing's changing like all hurricanes do, you know, they say, it won't turn and actually hit lower, but they said that during Charlie too.
Yeah.
And you get, of course, you get bans even before that that are pretty serious.
Right.
I know the last hurricane we had, we, um, we were out of electricity, I think, even the city for, uh, about seven days in some areas. And we had a lot of emergency meetings right outside the store on the steps because we had no electricity in city hall. And we checked our generator, make sure that it's going to work correctly. Have we tested it lately or is it automatically tested?
It gets tested automatically.
Okay.
And, and Rick and his troops and the chief, they've been checking all their equipment and Rick can pass on what we're doing, but they've been, been working. I'm meeting with all staff tomorrow at zero nine hundred to talk about who we need to come out, who's on call and all that stuff.
I, I know that, uh, when winds get to be a certain, uh, force, that even like fire departments and police, some police or sheriffs are, aren't allowed to go out. That even like fire departments and police, some police or sheriffs are, aren't allowed to go out.
Correct.
So uh do we, do we have any plans at all if somebody contacts us for some type of emergency help? Uh do we, are there having anybody available Wednesday for emergency help of any kind?
Once the, if the winds get up, is it forty-three, forty-five, forty-three or forty-five? I haven't been at sheriff's house, dealt with this all the time. No one's coming to help you. The winds are too high, we're not coming out and putting anybody at risk, but. Yes, for anything doing, especially with utilities or roads and trees down that, when we get out, we will take care of it. If there's uh storm debris, we don't touch it. We've got the, for the new ones here, we, we have an agreement with the county. Um if there's a tree across the road, yeah, we'll get it, but if there happens to be any storm debris, that's all picked up by the county. What they don't, they incorporate it and in the city, unincorporate in the city. And what they don't get paid for through FEMA, then the city in Sebring Lake Placid reimbursing, but actually I just pulled that one out and sent it to. Everybody that need to know that to read it, make sure we're not touching stuff we don't need to be.
Yeah. Anything else?
No.
I got a question for Mark. Mark, what are the designated shelters here in Avon Park? And are they online?
It, yes, actually, anything the county's putting out, Chrissy's um. Got, you just click on ours and it goes right to the county, but as of one o'clock, unless chief knows anything different. Um they're going to open up the special needs shelter down George Boulevard, which you have to already be registered. I think it's a hundred and twenty-five people and get in there. And they're going to open up Allen Jay down in Sebring. And the backup, if needed, it's going to be the Boys and Girls Club in Lake Placid High School. And they believe they probably will, because they think there's going to be a lot of people coming from the coast. So as of now, just the two, they're going to stand up, but that may change as the weather gets worse.
Yeah.
So we don't have any designated shelters in Avon Park, except for the Boys and.
Boys and Girls Club.
That's all?
That's it.
Is that a pet friendly shelter?
No, I don't know where the, do you know where they?
Yeah, they're calling that the pet friendly shelter.
You have some churches, right, if they come aboard?
Shelters are done by the county. We don't control the shelters. They're the ones that designate the shelters.
And nor did I know that was a pet friendly one, because I told them no the last time.
We might want to talk to them tomorrow then about that.
Leave your pets at home.
Right, because. Yeah, I told them no, because there's people that don't want to come in with dogs and that, so. Um chief and I will talk about that one. Uh uh what would you say about the church?
Um, aren't some churches shelters?
Uh maybe on their own, but not designated by the county. The building has to specify certain rating on hurricanes before they'll use it as a shelter.
Right.
Then it has to have generators and everything else and and deputy sheriff or police officers at all of them and a lot of volunteers. Jim said he's going to volunteer soon.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned. Everybody stay safe.